Hello. It's on. Do you want a microphone test from the council members?
Well, they should all be back.
Okay. Are we good? Or we're good to start? Okay, it's seven o'clock. March 12th, 2019. And we are proceeding. I'll call this meeting to order. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes, but I don't have minutes to approve. Do we have minutes to approve?
Rachel Lynn.
Thank you. Mayor and council reports. So, it has been a busy couple of weeks. And specifically, we are just here. This is the last week of the legislative session at our last council meeting. We did have legislation that we said we were going to follow. And so, I just have a quick follow-up of those bills that we talked about. The tax bill is dead, but will be discussed at interim. SB 34 has passed the House and Senate. And now, it's just on to whether or not it's going to actually get funded. Alcohol. We will continue to have 3-2 beer in Utah. That did not pass. But 18-year-olds may still be able to serve alcohol. When I was looking, I didn't have a definitive answer that that had not passed. Running red lights, meaning a red light is a stoplight. That failed. Sorry, Karen. HB 411, the Renewal Act, actually passed out of committee and passed the House last night. So, that is good news. That was something that, Kalen, you were talking about. But I'm just curious if we want to have action to... For as it's going to the Senate. And I'm not sure. I didn't check today what the status is of HB 411.
Yeah, I didn't either.
I can tell you got its first reading in Senate rules today.
So, and... That's it?
Yeah.
So, if we want to take action on 411, we can. Or we can just individually.
I have individually. If somebody wants to write something, I'm happy to sign. For people in the audience, that's the Community Renewable Energy Act.
Yeah. So, individually?
Individually.
So, no council action. And then, the SB 44 was an ATV amendment bill. It did pass. It gave greater freedom for ATVs and UTVs to drive on highways. I did want to ask this council to consider that during the interim, that perhaps we reconsider an amendment for that bill as well and to workshop through. So, it's no action right now. But it is possible to amend the ATV bill. And it's something that we've been talking about and listening to and responding to as a community. So, just wanted to see if we're all in agreement that that could be a possible action for interim?
Yes.
Okay. And then, finally, HB 320, the banning of municipalities to ban plastic bags. So, I'm happy to report that Ann sent to all of you the text last night that Representative Mike McKell is the sponsor, was the sponsor of the bill. He had circled it twice. Once when Karen and I were up there asking him not to pass it. And then, again, when myself and my son, Oscar, were up there at the House saying, "We don't support this bill." Circled both times. But last night, he attempted to uncircle it. And it did not pass to uncircle. And the video is pretty funny. If you have a minute, if you want to pull it up, le.uutah.gov. Because people are booing at the uncircling of the bill. So, there was strong dislike for the bill by the majority of the legislature because it was preemption. And a lot of people think cities should have the flexibility to do what they want to do, not be governed by the legislature in that way. So, it is pretty much dead for now. Who knows if it will rear its ugly head? But Karen does say...
Mike said he would not, if it did not pass this time, he would not bring it back up again next year.
So...
Somebody else can, though.
Yeah. And that is the legislative recap for us. And I did attend the LPC, as Ronnie did as well. Ronnie, I didn't know if you wanted to go into a deeper dive with policies that they talked about. But I kind of feel like comprehensively that that kind of covers what's going on for the legislative session for us. Although, there might be a bill or two you might want to mention in your report. For the other things that I did in the past two weeks, I attended an Association of Local Governments meeting up in Price. And at that meeting, we did pass, we did discuss and vote on CIB-funded projects and CDBG projects. And so, Chuck is going to report on one of those tonight, which is in our favor, which is very exciting. I also spent this past Friday and the Friday before, so the two Fridays in between our meeting today and last two weeks ago, at the Capitol. And I attended Rural Caucus. And it's really nice, I think it was really nice for us as a city to have a presence at Rural Caucus during legislative session. Karen was there two weeks ago with me. And she was present when I presented with the Executive Director of the League of Cities and Towns, Cameron Deal, about how the tax legislation could very negatively impact our community. And so, it's, so I did that. And then, also, this past Friday was Housing Day on the Hill. So, I talked to legislators and housing advocates about our issues of housing in rural, but also in tourism, with a tourism-based economy, how our housing issues are very complicated. Let's see. I'll leave the UDOT Regional Transportation Meeting to David, for David to talk about. The Wee-Below's came and visited us at City Hall. That was really fun. We did have a PAD workshop where we talked about next steps and where we talked about kind of the council directive to remove R2 from the PAD for now, to pass it without the R2, but with a directive to staff to workshop, staff and Planning Commission, to send it back to Planning Commission to workshop what a PAD would look like in R2. Is that where we all sit with the PAD? Are we in the same understanding at this point? Okay, I just wanted to report that. Out for all of us. And two more quick things. I attended, as did Mike yesterday and Ronnie yesterday, an UMTRA tour. So, if one of you want to talk about that in more detail, it was great. But then, finally, today, this morning, I attended a USU advisory meeting. We do have 2.5 million committed as community contribution. USU is still fundraising for the additional monies needed to build the campus. The road is slated to be complete this summer. And so, USU is hoping to break ground after that road is complete. The nice thing that I wanted to just recognize from the meeting today was the relationship between USU and our Grand County High School and Grand County School District. There's a lot of synergy. And so, what's good for USU is good for Grand County, too, and our school district, too. So, there's still fundraising effort that's underway and to be continued. And that's it from me.
I attended an EMS meeting last night. So, EMS is now its own special service district. And a few things that were a little bit interesting about things we went over last night was we looked at the 2017 call number versus 2018. So, in 2017, it was 1,151. And last year, 1,282. And we also looked at some graphs of calls over the last 10 years. And when you look at the graph of that, we've always had more local calls than non-local calls. But the local calls are even more on the upswing. And just to give you a little idea of breakdown for calls last year, 11% were automotive or motorcycle-related. 17% had to do with transferring people from one place to another. 12% were backcountry. 8%, interestingly, were canceled. Sometimes you start a call and it gets canceled on the way. 45% were either in city limits, or let's just say, from the river all the way down into Spanish Valley to the San Juan County line. And then, 6% were outside of that area. So, Castle Valley, Thompson, Green River, and we have an agreement with San Juan County. EMS will be looking into options for facility expansion and improvement at their current site. So, they're going to be talking to the county about that and potentially going to the CIB. We had a Canyons Healthcare Special Service District meeting. And the Canyons Care Center has gotten another award. Pinnacle Quality Insight let us know. We qualified for the Pinnacle Customer Experience Award in seven service areas. And those include things like overall satisfaction, nursing care, safety and security. I won't read the whole thing, but it is interesting. The award is given to providers who achieve best-in-class customer satisfaction standards with their peer group. And we were in the top 15% of 2,700 facilities across the country. Let's see, I did go on the UMTRA tour of the site right here near town. We didn't do Crescent Junction yesterday. But that was really great. We had 20 people. And Mike can talk about it a little bit more. But I would encourage anyone who's interested, each year when we do the science, the day of science, Festival of Science, sorry, the general public can sign up for a tour there. And it's pretty interesting to get an up-close look at how everything operates and how things leave the pile and proceed on their way up north. And we also looked at some of the revegetation that goes on. And let's see. I did want to mention, just tailing on to my report on our UMTRA fundraising trip to DC last time, we were waiting for the presidential budget to come out because senators and representatives had asked us to send them a reminder once the budget comes out. And it just came out yesterday, I believe. So, we'll be doing follow-up related to that. And I realized when I reported last time, I do not think I offered enough effusive praise to our Department of Energy staff that we work with here, who have been really great. So, a shout-out to the staff here, and Russell McAllister especially, and the Grand County UMTRA liaison, Russ Von Koch, who gives us great information on the project. And the other thing that I forgot to mention just when I was giving the public report was that experience of going to DC, I think, is a really powerful and important one to teach council members how to lobby. So, I'm just hoping in the future, we can do some trainings so all the council members have that opportunity. And maybe we can identify some other topics that it makes sense for the city to lobby on, on that front. And the mayor already reported on a lot of legislation that was of interest and importance. Just at our last meeting, I had commented on three bills. And I'm just going to report on those. One was House Bill 220, the Radioactive Waste Amendments, which make it easier to bring depleted uranium into the state. That did pass the House and Senate. It went to the governor on the first of March. And so, Mike and I and Tony and Kalen and Karen signed a letter to the governor asking him to veto it. I guess we'll see what happens. Let's see. And then, I had mentioned those two bills related Senate bill, sorry, not related to that, but Senate Bill 103 on Victim-Targeting Penalty Enhancements. That, I was just looking for an update. Passed out of the Senate. And I believe it just passed the House. We'll just make sure tonight that that's the case. So, presumably, that will move on to the governor. So, that's been, I don't know, 20 years' worth of work for people working on that. So, that's good news. House Bill 399, which would have prohibited the practice of conversion therapy on minors, got gutted in the process. And so, the sponsor actually pulled it. There was some confusion in the media coverage. I read that the Lieutenant Governor actually apologized for not, I don't know, I don't want to quote him. So, anyway, but anyway, you can look it up. But anyway, the Lieutenant Governor has said that he'll try and help people who are working on that bill work on this issue in the interim. I think that was everything.
Thanks, Ronnie.
The UMTRA tour was, the most interesting part was they took us down into the area in between the river and the dam itself, where they remarked that their biggest non-radioactive hazard over there is ammonia, so it over from when the mill used to run. They would use acid baths to separate out the radio war from uranium from the uranium war. And then, ammonia comes into the actuarium. And those plumes are still out there. So, they tried to dilute those out with fresh water. The biologist who was talking to us remarked that they're trying to remediate the area basically back the way it was before the mill was ever there. And then, they're planting native species of grass and herbs and so on, as well as native fish. And the biologist happened, and she was talking about high versus low water levels and her little side channel would come off into the slough there and so forth. And she remarked that native fishes are smart enough to tell when the water level is dropping, and they better get the heck out of the river before they get stranded, whereas the non-native species aren't that smart.
And about the time she was talking, I had my hearing aids in. And I was really stunned at how loud a pair of herons can squawk. I mean, she just interrupted all the conversation while we were out there. You remember that? It was pretty cool. So, that was my little biology experiment for the week.
Thanks, Mike. Tony?
I only did the fun stuff. I attended the PAD workshop last week. And I went to Reality Town at the middle school on Friday. And it was very fun. And I don't want to be 14 ever again. And I attended Uranium the Musical on Sunday afternoon. And it was very well-done. And I put out my very first container of recycled material. And it only filled up about this much at the bottom.
Thanks, Tony.
Okay, so, I attended a Chamber Board meeting. And just a reminder that the Chamber Golf Tournament fundraiser is happening on May 24th. And this is an event that funds two scholarships for Grand County High School students, seniors. I attended the Mill Creek Visioning and Brainstorm Meeting. Again, we met with about 20 individuals from various sectors of the community, public and private, to focus on short-term goals for Powerhouse area. And it was discussed that the, that public input will need to take place through this process. And I mentioned that maybe they could set up shop at one of our land use community meetings that we are going to hold. Betsy Byrne was a mentor of Mark Vlasic. And so, they know each other. And I thought it might be a good opportunity for the community to...
It's all very synergistic. I like it.
You'd be like that? I know. I went to this state Capitol and met with legislators about the House Bill 220 that Emily was talking about, the plastic bag ban ban. And went to support the mayor, give testimony to the Rural Caucus about the ill effects of the expanded tax bill for resort communities of our size. She did a great job.
Thank you.
You're welcome. She'll tell you all about it. Emily, and I encouraged Mike McKell, the bill sponsor, to invite us on the floor to see legislation in action. It was my first time. It was super cool. And while we were sitting there, I was able to work legislators around to oppose preemption on principle alone and allow us, as a local governing body, to determine what is best course of action for a city of our size. McKell circled the bill. And Tony mentioned in a text that it should just circle down the drain, which it did. Which is, again, it was awesome to see how it works and put faces to names and shake hands and all that kind of good stuff. Attended the annual UDOT Regional Transportation Planning Meeting. It was decided there would be an implementation plan for the city, county, and even a portion of San Juan County on determining long-range goals for the valley and detailed analysis for modes of public transportation, for example, rail, plane, maybe buses, figuring out important regional roads outside of 191. And then, I attended the middle school open house to see architectural drawings of the new school that will be built on the existing football and soccer fields. And it's going to be breaking ground in May. So, good things.
Thanks, Karen.
I attended a county council meeting in which they discussed collaborating with us on our future land use plan consultant. And I smiled and nodded convincingly because they have agreed to do so. I attended a Housing Task Force meeting. We continued to discuss our community priorities for 2019, as well as the role of the Housing Task Force. And they're looking forward to more engagement by city staff at some point. I attended a listing session with Willie Gray Eyes and Kenneth Maryboy in northern San Juan County. They really want to engage with more, the periphery of San Juan County, and be more collaborative. So, it seemed like that was a positive first connection. And hopefully, we, especially Grand County, can do more with San Juan County insofar as planning for the benefit of all. I attended a Moab Dark Skies meeting. And the county council is having their public hearing on their draft outdoor lighting ordinance in one week, next Tuesday after 6:00 PM. So, if you're so inclined, please go support them. I attended a solid waste district special meeting to have a conversation with Kate Bailey, who was in town yesterday. She's from EcoCycle, a nonprofit that runs a single-stream MRF recycling pickup and education efforts for Boulder County, Colorado. And our discussion covered a range of waste management topics, including their transition from source-separated to single-stream, opportunities that we might have for regional collaboration in western Colorado, and how to best allocate districts, our district's limited resources for long-term waste management. I went on the UMTRA tour. And I attended the League of Women Voters Panel Discussion on Recycling Realities. And thank you, council members that attended. I thought it was a good conversation and it was certainly well-attended.
Thanks for being on the panel.
Yeah.
And I think I left you out when I said the UMTRA, so I'm sorry.
Oh.
It was good that so many of us were there.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kalen. David, administrative reports.
A few things. It'll be a group effort here. First...
Just sorry to interrupt, just for all of you, that's number seven on our agenda.
First of all, as you all know, we have officially hired a new city planner. Nora Shepherd has accepted our offer. And we're just finalizing things. And as you can, I'm sure, would be shocked to hear, she's out there looking for housing right now. But she's excited to join us. And we're aiming for a mid-April start date at this point. Hopefully, sooner, but that's our target at the latest. The, I did attend with the mayor and council member Guzman Newton, the UDOT's initial kickoff meeting for planning, thinking about regional mobility and transportation planning, which is really the next step for us as a community. It's nothing that's really ever happened as a comprehensive planning effort in our community, specifically around transportation. And UDOT has been helping to facilitate it happening, not really driving the agenda at all, but trying to get us to organize ourselves as a county and a city and San Juan County as well, and think about how we want to best administer the planning process moving forward. So, I'm excited to see that happen. That's a big, big step for us as a community. And it implicates all sorts of transportation issues, whether it's the potential for a shuttle system, transit, if we're talking about active transportation infrastructure in the future, if we're talking about ever, you know, if the bypass continues to be a topic of conversation, all that would be implicated in a long-range regional transportation planning process. And what that would do, among other things, would be to help us prioritize as a community and then be able to tell the state, hey, these projects are priorities. And then, they would integrate those into their long-range planning process. So, pretty cool. A little nerdy, but pretty cool. And then...
Definitely relevant for us to access funding.
Uber-relevant, yes, very, very much so. We're in the process of implementing the trash and recycling rate changes, which means a big education and engagement effort coming up. I know there's going to be some visits to the Grand Center, for instance, to have some real hands-on education opportunities between staff and those in the center there who are visiting the center. And we'll be doing a bunch of different outreach efforts and making sure that we have the ability for people to respond with what kind of trash and recycling options they want to do, either in person, or via a mailer, or online, or even with a phone call. So, very multimodal, as it were, in our approach there. So, I'm excited about that. And then, actually, Chuck, I'll just invite you up to speak really quickly about, among, implicated is the petition that we had received a few weeks ago about speed limits and traffic going through the 100 North, 100 East area, right?
Right. Yes, so, we've got the petition. We've looked at it. We're working with the police department to do a speed study, which is the way that the feds tell, the state tells the cities and counties to utilize the manual and uniform traffic control devices for establishing speed limits. There's some flexibility in there in terms of all sorts of items. But one of the keys to it's going to be a new piece of radar equipment that the police are purchasing. And the chief and I talked about it. I think he's here to talk a little bit more about it. So, I'll let him talk about that piece of equipment, which would allow us to do speed studies at different locations throughout town. So, road characteristics, pedestrian activity are also considered, as well as the free flow of traffic. So, we'll do the study. It's several weeks out. We need this radar to come in. And we'll be following up with you then on the results of that study. But we are working on that petition.
Thank you so much for that update and the responsiveness to the community members that put forward that petition.
You're welcome. The other thing, CDBG, wanted to let you know that our CDBG application for improvements at the Center Street Gym was approved. And for $74,000, we have some next steps that we'll have to comply with, some at the staff level, some. Another will be a second public hearing for council before May 31st. So, we'll make sure that we get that in the queue. But congratulations, I think, are in order. I think that's a good project.
The Center Street Gym is getting an elevator.
Yeah.
It's for ADI accessibility, yes. It's great.
It'll be an accessible unit.
I just have a quick question. So, the 100 North, 100 East, I mean, is it specifically just those streets? Or is it kind of, and we know we don't have many speed limit signs between Main Street and 400 East, aside from 300 South. So, would it include some of the other ones, too?
Yes, the petition actually calls out five or six. I just kind of globally called it 100.
Okay, no, no, that's fine. I just wanted to check.
Yeah, we'll look at that petition specifically. There's, I think, six different locations they talked about in there.
Okay.
And we'll evaluate that, all of them.
Chuck, will that radar be attached to a ticket?
It's printed out right there.
I'm certainly not the ticket...
Asking for a friend.
I'm not the ticket giver in this organization. Maybe the chief could address that one better.
Yeah.
Or is it just for a study?
Thank you, Chuck.
Is it a study?
It's a data, so it's a multiple, it's a really useful tool. It allows to give us data. And I think it allows, it's an educational tool.
Sure.
And I'm, as far as enforcement, I really would have to defer law enforcement.
Don't want the engineers giving tickets?
Yeah.
Chief, you want to come on out?
On that note, here comes Johnny Buzzkill.
Hi, Johnny. Welcome.
Members of the council, I'll just jump right in. Councilman Guzman, the device we're talking about is a fixed station radar that... Councilman Guzman, the device we're talking about is a fixed station radar that comes with an enforcement flashing sign and some other, some other flashing red and blue signs. There's a series of things we can do to gain a driver's attention. As you know, the state of Utah forbids stationary photo radar, so we cannot write tickets from it. But what the device does is, we can set it up in any location, and we'll work with engineering on this, but the value of it is that it can give us specific numbers of vehicles that have traveled, specific speeds, and we can choreograph that or correlate that based on time of day and other factors. Why that is very important is what we oftentimes get are complaints from citizens, very legitimately, and they say, gee, they're speeding on my road, but they can't really narrow it down to give us the most effective time to be there. Does that make sense? And so what we want to do is be able to use this device to get a pattern, then we will send officers out. And it's our philosophy to do educational efforts first. When we first go out, we issue oftentimes warning citations unless it's a very egregious violation during that kind of examination period. And the officers have some flexibility, but, so the point is, we would go out, we would try and do an educational effort. Then we will replace the, return the stationary device to get a sense if that education effort had an impact. So you do a before, you do an education, then you do an after. And then we correlate that with engineering so that we can come back and say, gee, because the enforcement really has a limited effect. You know, once the cop's gone and the trailer's gone, oftentimes, you know, the effect is gone. And so the goal is just to identify engineering solutions that really help us in the long term, and what those are, you know, or there's a whole host of them. And I think as the city grows and expands, we'll be, I'm sure, experimenting with a lot of those different engineering efforts. But I will just say that the change of speed, along with the flashing signage on 500 West, from my perspective and from our enforcement-related statistics, seems to have been widely successful. Really has proven as to be a good thing. So modification to the speed limit seems quite good.
Thank you so much for that.
You bet.
And I know you're also here to update us on the activity that happened at the school yesterday.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just, I'm just curious if maybe we should... Eve, are you able to give up your chair? I just feel like this is a really important, so that you could be seen on YouTube and another...
I'd prefer not, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm kidding, I'm only kidding. Do whatever you want.
Whatever you want, ma'am.
You're the mayor, ma'am.
I don't mean to shuffle you around, but I do know that a lot of people still have questions and concerns about what happened, and I'm really grateful for you to present in this...
Suddenly, I feel very awkward. I'm just kidding. No, thank you, I don't want to make this light at all. What we had yesterday, approximately 2:00, 2:15 in the afternoon, the Web City Police Department received a series of reports from, one specific being from an educator at the middle school, who had identified armed subjects in and around the middle school. I will be honest with you, as I monitored the radio traffic, I thought, you know, default to do it might be an erroneous report. We got a second report from an individual at City Market, which of course heightened everyone's concern. Our first officer was on scene at the middle school in about 45 seconds, and identified three males with semi-automatic weapons and what appeared to be tactical vests. We had received no notification in Moab, with the Moab City Police Department, of an operation of any kind. We immediately mobilized not only our resources, but as is the case, all of the law enforcement resources here in the Moab area monitor our frequencies, and we had a, what I can only describe as a very robust response. We had officers from the Utah Highway Patrol, Division of Natural Resources, we had Parks, Grand County, and of course, Moab City respond not just to the middle school, but we diverted resources to the three other schools and immediately locked them all down. We did that as a precautionary measure because we didn't really know what we had and felt it was prudent at the time. Officers arrived and confronted individuals there at the school and quickly learned they were law enforcement officers from Salt Lake. What had happened is a unit attached to the United States Marshal Service, its acronym is VFAST, the Violent Fugitive Apprehension Team, which operates predominantly in the Wasatch Front and targets individuals that are armed and dangerous. It's a very effective and very professional unit. That frankly rarely leaves the Wasatch Front, but they do. In this instance, they had come to Moab seeking an individual and had sent an email to the Grand County Sheriff's Office. When that email was sent, we don't know, it was never transmitted. I'm not sure how that all happened. I think it went to a civilian staff member or something and just didn't get transmitted up the line. Frankly, insufficient notification anyway, because when they got into town, the normal protocol is for them to come physically and meet with our police department and embed one of our personnel with them, for obvious reasons. They didn't do that, and so what happened, it appears, is the officers were preparing, there was 20 of them, they were preparing to go serve this warrant, and what they do is their normal course of action, is they will find a location where they can stop, put on their protective equipment, their vests, prepare their firearms, identify the particular location, they're going to go get ready, is essentially the plan. In doing so, they apparently looked at Google Maps, and on Google Maps, they thought that the location was a church, a church parking lot, so they went there to prepare it was the school. And so, they were, I mean, all I can say is they were blown away, that's a terrible euphemism. They were, they were as, not as upset, they were completely taken off guard when we arrived there, because they didn't put two and two together, why we were racing around with our lights on and all this kind of thing, and there was just mass confusion. And when they finally realized what had happened, I will tell you that, you know, we had a very robust discussion about our displeasure of both their policies and procedures and their response. Subsequent to that, I phoned the United States Marshal directly. We had another very good conversation, and I believe that this situation will not repeat itself. Nonetheless, what I will tell you is, from our perspective, if there's any good that can come of it, it was that all of the schools managed this lockdown situation in what I, it was a very professional manner, but it was very, very frightening. We intentionally never do drills where we, you know, try and frighten, for obvious reasons, it's traumatic. This was unintentional, but the educators did a very, very good job in very difficult situations. We did have students in our community that were emotionally affected. That is a tragedy. I've been asked the question multiple times, you know, how can we avoid that? Gee, I wish we could. You know, even though this was a terrible mistake, the reality of it is, we live in a time where this is the god-awful reality of what can happen. So, you know, would never wish it to happen again in any way, shape, or form, but gee, we all came together. The officers, I see Brody here in the, in the audience, and other local resources just handled themselves very effectively, and we ought to be proud of ourselves. But it was damn scary.
I will follow up and say that the US Marshal in charge of Utah, Mike, what's his last name?
Smith.
Nope. Mike.
I can't remember off the top, I was going to reach my phone.
Oh, I can't, I forget his last name. He did call me.
Ah, good.
And he issued all of us an apology, of which I was very grateful that he did. And I did ask him if he ever makes his way down to Moab, and he said yes, and I said, well, the next time you come down, let's sit down and have a conversation. So, and then I also made a call to Superintendent JT Schroeder. And I just want to say that when an incident happens, we like to look at the rearview and make judgments. And I just want to say that it was a terrifying event for him as well. And I know that there are systems that we can improve upon, and communication can always, I mean, I've never been in a group, an organization, a family, where you don't talk about how you need to improve communication. But I do want to say that our superintendent and the staff and faculty at our schools, it was a traumatic experience, and they're certainly going to learn, sorry, learn from their experience. And I just ask this, all of us, to just give them a little bit of, you know, kindness, because they were traumatized too. And so I just kind of extended my, you know, my arm to JT today, just because I'm sure that this has been a very hard time for him as well. So.
I just wanted to mention two things. I was at the EMS meeting yesterday, and I just wanted to pass on praise for you guys, for Director Andy Smith, because he said the law enforcement response was very impressive. But I also want to say that we were, he gave the board, the EMS board, a demonstration of old radio versus new yesterday.
Yeah.
Oddly, odd timing, we were just discussing the fact that part of the problem with the old radios, so thanks to the city for replacing the PD's radios too, is that before EMS couldn't have radioed out of the school to other EMS responders with the old radios, but now you can hear each other with the new radios. So thanks to everybody for getting those changed, and thanks for, yeah, educating us about those.
Not at all. If I may, the radios were a great success. Those have been issued out, the handhelds were working on the mobiles. But I will say, as we came into the area, this is the neat thing about the community, Andy praised us, EMS had already taken the responsibility, they had an ambulance at One Street, were acting as traffic blocks as well, so were fire personnel, we even had some Public Works guys monitoring that helped us out on this. So, I mean, that piece of it, you know what I mean? It just, so you're right, it was a lot of good, but gee, bad deal. And I said to the marshals that were here, many of whom are friends of mine, I worked with this unit very closely, and I do just want to say, you know, they didn't intend to do it, it was just a series of very terrible errors, but, you know, I told them, I said, you know, in this town, what you don't realize, it's not like the Salt Lake, when we get racing around doing that stuff and in our radios, people are monitoring that. It's like a, you know, it just, it's like a contagion, and it just really affected the whole town. So I think they got it.
And one other thing, I did ask him to put in writing for our community, the description of the events, so that our community isn't hearing secondhand from any of us what happened, but that they are reporting what happened from them themselves. So, and he said he'll issue that by tomorrow.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, chief.
Any other questions on any other topics? I've probably taken more time than I should. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And if there are no other presentat-, sorry, reports, we'll move into fun presentation for Student of the Month for Charter School and HMK. So, Legacy Blake and Noel Patterson, if you will join me right up here. I'm going to turn this around, so we can kind of be heard. Congratulations. If you want to come in closer, so that maybe you want a deeper picture. Okay. Whereas the staff and faculty of HMK on a monthly basis select a Student of the Month, and the Charter School select a Student of the Month based on the student's citizenship and their involvement within their school, and whereas it is the desire of the city of Moab to foster and recognize the contributions of the young people of this community in regards to good citizenship, now therefore, the city of Moab joins with Helen M. Knight Elementary School and the Moab Charter School in recognizing Legacy Blake, here's your pen, and your certificate, and Noel Patterson as the Students of the Month for March 2019. Also comes with this, a crisp $50 bill. And now, your brother was also a Student of the Month too, so this is kind of a family thing, huh? Congratulations. Congratulations. And you can wear a pen, your pen like me. And who would like to speak on behalf of these amazing children tonight? Come on up. Whoever wants to come first, Jill?
Hi, Legacy. Well, I've had the honor to also be a teacher to Legacy, so this is student assignment for me. Anyway, Legacy's teacher writes about her, she has amazing grit and determination. They are the characteristics that come into mind when thinking of Legacy. Legacy puts so much time and effort into her assignments because she always wants to do her best. She doesn't let the difficulty of an assignment stop her. She perseveres by remaining focused on whatever assignment she is tackling. In addition, Legacy goes above and beyond what she is required, and is, she is always willing to help others. I nominate Legacy for Student of the Month because she is a great role model for students and adults.
And that is so very true. I guess I'll just come over here, and you can go over there.
Well, good evening. I, like Jill, with Legacy, was Noel's kindergarten teacher, a long time ago.
Please tell it to me, and I like to wear flats, just to remind you of that, it's okay, girl.
But this month, when we, as a staff, were choosing our Student of the Month, I was approached by numerous teachers saying, you have to pick Noel, Noel needs a special award, Noel has done this, Noel has done that, and I said, well, of course. And when we all talked about it, Noel has really come to find himself this year in what we have all called service to others. He is the first guy to help clean up after lunch, take out the recycling, do a little extra things there, here, pick up the balls on the playground, do whatever it is to be of service to others. And so we thank Noel for being the go-to guy for all of us. So, thanks, guys.
For your parents that are here, one of this girl. Come on in and say cheese, one, two, three, cheese.
Congratulations, thanks for being awesome.
And thanks for sticking around during this meeting. Learned a little bit. And we are going to move on on the agenda, so if you want to go ahead and take off and spend that cash... On dinner, or ice cream, or maybe a savings account, or a bond. Bye, congratulations. We are now at item number nine, citizens to be heard. I have three forms in front of me. Darcy Brown, you are up, and Ken. I don't know if you're together or just...
Yes, and we have the Northeastern too.
Oh, please come on up, if you want to grab two other chairs. Chuck, can you pull the one in front of you? And if there's another one that we can, you don't need... Oh, you're just going to sit back. Oh, well, then we can move the chair back. They're leaving you high and dry here.
He tried to go to a meeting tonight, so we wouldn't be here, but it... My name is Darcy Brown, and I am the co-owner of 1040 Pear Tree Lane, and we are asking that the city place the same requirements on our Pear Tree lot as is placed on the other neighboring lots along Pear Tree Lane, and that it lift a platno restriction that has been placed on it. Quickly, a brief history. In 2013, we bought Lot 2 in Pear Tree Lane, and neither the owner's disclosure form nor the title insurance that we had showed that 10 years earlier, the city, after a quitclaim subdivision, had placed a platno on the land that reestablished a 1998 requirement that prior to development, the owner must pave, sidewalk, and gutter the land. A year ago, we decided we wanted to sell the land, and we have subsequently lost three written offers to purchase our land due to the uncertainty surrounding the platno restriction. Meanwhile, the contiguous lot next door has been subdivided, and a manufactured home, several sheds, a large motor home, and a huge shipping container have been added, with no requirement from the city to pave sidewalk... no requirement from the city to pave, sidewalk, or gutter the new lot. And the identical lot, and I have a picture there, it's the.
Are you talking about the lot that says Trantor?
Yeah, that's the one that now is sold to the ground with other things. And then on the flip side, on the other side of border, I mean, on the opposite side of border, it says Borders, that's our, we own half of that, and then on the flip side, there's another one that says Weiss. And so, that was recently sold, and there was no restriction on that property either. So both pieces on either side have had, have not had the same restriction. We request that there be equal application of development requirements, particularly since meeting those requirements for a single residence may exceed the assessed value of the property. In the future, if all Pear Tree owners are assessed for road gutters and sidewalks, we or our signs would be expected to be assessed in the same area. Likewise, any PUD proposal would also be expected to meet requirements for curb gutter sidewalk that the city felt they were desirable. We just don't want any special treatment. That plat note has made our property unsalable, and we urge the city to remove it. Thank you.
Thank you, Darcy. Thanks for coming tonight to be heard. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for the map. Wendy Young.
Thanks for having me.
Can you bring, I'm sorry, the microphone closer, so everybody can hear you.
Okay. I've been here before about this same thing, so, but I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me. I am Wendy Young, I live on Park Drive, and I'm here to discuss the senior housing that's going in at the end of my street. And I sent an email earlier today regarding this, so you guys all should have received it, but we're just a little bit frustrated with how everything's kind of going down over there. We found out today that there's not going to be any public hearing for the land because it's considered a single lot. And it's a single lot that has 36 units in it, that's more units than houses in our whole subdivision. And that's going to have a huge impact on our street. We have, they want all the traffic to go in and out on our road, and we moved into that house because it is a dead-end street, and we have lots of kids that live there. And so we would, we wish that there would be some kind of consideration for the impact that it's going to have on our area. We already have the trailer park, Grand Oasis, at the end of our street, then we're going to put more low-income housing at the other end of our street, and then on the backside of, we have the Grand Center right behind our house, the hospital next to that, and then the low-income housing on Walnut Lane, right there too. So we'd just like to see if there's some way that maybe there could be a better access point, or some consideration with the, it's a 36-unit, three-story apartment building that's going to go in the middle of our neighborhood. So, I know there's, it seems like there's really not much we can do, we've kind of been told that from the get-go, but it'd be nice if you looked into it, because that's a lot of people that are going to be impacted, and our neighborhood has been impacted by the Grand Center, the hospital, the helicopter pads right behind our house. And we totally understand that we want low-income housing, we would love it ourselves, we can't, most of us can't even move from our street because we can't afford to live anywhere else. But we really appreciate if there was some way to do a public hearing, or a meeting, or something where we could maybe gather some input and have people able to share their concerns with what is going on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Brody.
It's always better to follow your better half. I'm Brody Young, I live at 409 Park Drive, just as Wendy just mentioned. Wanted to back her up and all that she said, but also to remind you that that access to those units will, there will only be one access, and it's through our neighborhood, which has been in dead-end for many years. We are the permanent residents, you know, of that neighborhood, some of residents in that neighborhood have lived there their whole lives. Anyway, we were notified yesterday that this was happening, and it felt like it was short notice, and that we were unjustly unnotified this was happening. Anyway, we have signatures that was also sent with that letter in the email of everyone on the west side of that Park Drive, including Opel and the other cul-de-sac. And so, with that said, we were hoping to get a voice to the table before this happened. If there's any way that we can delay this and maybe talk about it more, we do have a solution. There's an access, another access at Williams Way, that takes that little hospital road, that could be another access to this neighborhood, new neighborhood, that I think would help those who are going to be living in that unit access the hospital, the Grand Center, and town, instead of coming down our street and making left-hand turns and creating a lot of traffic. I can tell you how many times that I've backed up motorhomes and trailers from people that who've come all the way up to the dead-end, and I end up backing them out because they can't do it themselves because they were looking for the city park or another avenue through town, and so, we'd like to keep our neighborhood quiet, and we hope we'll take that into consideration. Thanks.
Thanks, Brody. Those are all of the citizens to be heard forms that I have. Are there any other citizens? Thank you for coming. We will move on to old business, we're at section 10 on our agenda. 10-1, a briefing on the 100 West, 100 South Infrastructure Improvement Project, striping and signage plan for back-in angle parking. Thanks, Chuck, for coming back to us with the plans that are about, of what we're about to see this summer, spring, spring or summer?
Spring. Spring, we hope.
Spring.
Yes, thank you. We just wanted to take a little bit of time to remind council that we are, yes, the 100 West project will end, and hopefully sooner, and I'm hoping to come back at the end of the project and give you a detailed description of the things that we encountered and why it took so long, so that everyone knows. With that being said, we're hoping to pave the week of the 25th, weather permitting, and then.
25th of?
March.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah, and then striping should occur within a few weeks after that. And one of the items that we'll be doing as we've, pilot programming the, for safety purposes, the reverse angle or back-in angle parking. So this is Main Street, this is 100 South, this is the curve here, this is, the red roof is Zach's Restaurant. Currently, or it's nose-in parking, right? You nose-in park. The back-in parking is the same amount of parking spaces, it's just a different movement that allows for a safer, studies show a safer flow of traffic, both of multimodal, both cars, pedestrians, as well as bicycles. And I'll move on here, but I'd like to show you a, here we go. A video, if I may. Takes about two and a half minutes.
I think you've got the tab up, back in, middle.
Oh, I do, don't I? Yeah, I don't know what that's about.
That was it. That's the one. That's the one.
Oh, that was the one, yeah. It'll just take a second, I know where it is here. It was, I stopped it partway through. You never know on YouTube.
Yeah.
So, this is a video that took place in Austin, Texas, about two and a half minutes, and this was their experience with back-in parking.
Does this look familiar? Backing in traffic on busy road is something drivers face every day. Well, Austin is proving to make parking safer. Here's how it works. Back-in angle parking is one step easier than parallel-up parking, simply seek old traffic to hide, and pass the spaces as you would with parallel-up parking. And back in. Loading packages is safer here on the sidewalk, and open doors block you from busy streets. And the best part, when you're ready to leave, it's easy to see ongoing traffic, including bicycles. In Austin, bicycles are a popular way to drive, bicycle lanes around town help protect cyclists from the flow of traffic, but remember, backing out of spaces blindly creates potential for collision. Back-in angle parking helps remove this danger, and is proven effective in the cities across the US. Look back here, for over here, drivers and cyclists on Main People Street have simply shared the road. I knew the sixteenth business owners, general Swedish gentleman, that warning of warnings and heat say they have seen the benefits too.
Love the fact that I can now load people's cars and take you to the cycle. They don't have to worry about intermodal traffic. I like that when they're finished, I'm ready to leave, they can comfortably depart, I remember the traffic's clear, they have a full view of the road, and so much.
I've been here back in Austin for 70 years, I've never parked on Sixth Street, never been parked, and I'm happy to have all the time. It's changed, different from what I was at, but I can't, it's the most part of the protection for that.
So, Austin, as you encounter back-in angle parking around town, remember, it's easier than parallel parking, and more importantly, safer for everyone who shares.
Thank you for that video, Chuck.
Yes, and I've been working with Lisa, our communications manager, and with the police department with Chief Winder, so we can educate the public, we've got signage, and we'll be out there to help people address it. We think it'll be a positive thing, you know, I suppose if at the end of the day, it's not the best idea, roads can be restriped. But they've been multiple, 20, 25 cities around the country of all different sizes have gone to this and have found it to be a safer way to do business and effective. And we have talked to Zach's Restaurant, which is where these parking lots, these will change, as well as across the street, this is basically open parking over here, and they're willing to give it a try. They understand, they've seen this presentation, they understand why we want to do it, and they support safer traffic as well. There will be an adjustment period, there's no doubt, it's something new, but if this is effective, we would anticipate that next year, as budget permitting, as we move into the 100 South, east of Main Street, that project would, we would also continue with this back-in angle parking. Be happy to answer any questions.
Check some of the oil. Lucky there, there's dirt on the road.
Probably have a napkin because of Oscar, but.
Thank you, sorry.
I got you.
Traffic, traffic going south on Main Street, who want to turn right on center there, people are trying to fill those first few spots there. It's, it could be backup track on Main Street.
Oh, the thing is about it, when you, if we were to take the time and watch those movements, it's the same amount of backing up. If you pull in there nose-first today, you're backing up when you leave, and you're backing up at the same people who are turning in. Now it's just a question of, you back in and pull out forward, it's the exact same amount. In fact, it's a shorter distance for the radius to turn.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is this what keeps Austin weird? Do we get to be weird too?
Are you comparing Moab to Austin? I wasn't.
Just wondering.
Do you know, like, when other cities started, did they start with a few streets at a time, or did they do the whole city? Are we like one of the first to try a little section first?
No, it's typically sections are identified. So, in some of the remote neighborhoods, this might not be an appropriate treatment. This is really important where there's bike lanes. So it's by neighborhood, if you will, or by sections of roadway.
It makes sense to me. I had a question from a resident, though, who was commenting, and I've noticed this too, that one of the things, whether you're front-end or back-end, that seems like it can be confusing for a cyclist or pedestrian or another driver, is just when vehicles get really long. And they were asking me if we have any code that limit the length of a vehicle, and I didn't think so, but you know what I mean? When you come around a corner, and sometimes it's just a really long extended bed or something, and they're just sticking out extra far, and they were just going to ask me, they asked me if we had anything like that, I didn't think so, and they asked if it was something we wanted to consider, I said, I don't know, I'll ask.
Those are the size of the parking spaces right there, and those are good-sized parking spaces, but I can tell you, I was less than two weeks ago pulling around that corner off of Main onto 100 South, and there was a full-size Winnebago pulled into the nose-in parking, sticking out almost to the middle of the road. And I don't know how to keep people from doing some of those things.
I mean, if it's really egregious, we could cite them for basically blocking a public roadway, you know, as if they'd almost parked in the middle of the road. That is one option we would have.
Yeah, I mean, to my knowledge, we didn't have any standard on how long things should be, it seems like it's probably common sense, but I just didn't know if there was a.
Our code says that in this, your vehicle's supposed to fit in the parking stall, and these parking stalls are designed for.
Striping ends is your indicator.
So, Chuck, along those lines, I mean, a concern is, I mean, I would almost prefer if we're going to try this, just do it city-wide, so it's not confusing to people, like, oh, you know, 100 is backup parking, I mean, because the moonflower in front of that is the most dangerous area, and if there's studies that show that this is more effective, I mean, it just feels like, gosh, we should just go for it.
Yeah.
Is that an option?
All I was going to say was, this is project-specific, we're anticipating more striping this season after this project, and we could certainly do more striping if everyone feels successful.
What would that need to be for the directive from council as new striping happens?
That would be a phenomenal amount of clarity to have, and it would be welcomed. So, you know, if that was, we could probably certainly put pen to paper and have that be officially anointed as a council policy on parking space striping. It makes sense to do it as much as we can, project by, as we do projects, as opposed to trying to, it gets really tricky when a striping's a certain way, and you don't repave, and then you try to restripe, you know what I mean? Like, that gets problematic, I've learned the hard way over the years. But if the policy direction is every time it's a, we're looking at a street and doing a chip seal or repaving to restripe accordingly, that's something we can tee up for you.
Why don't you?
Well, and then when we all participated in the downtown plan, we were asked as a community to chime in on places that we knew had had prior accidents were problematic, so can we use that to guide some of it too, because we know there, yeah, there's some areas that are more prone.
Sure. We do have that, and I meant to mention, if I didn't, that one of the things that will go along with it, wherever we put it, will be signage that says back-in angle parking, so you don't have to guess, right? There'll be a sign that says back-in angle parking, so people will know, be aware of the change if we do, both here and expanding it in the future.
Do we have enough width on Main Street when we possibly do some of the reconfigurations that we've talked about to do this on Main Street?
I'm hesitant to say yes or no without putting the pen to pencil, but I.
Okay, I just wondered.
Pen to paper, excuse me.
Pencil to paper.
Yeah.
Crayon, yeah, to use the pencil first. Okay, well, thank you so much for the briefing. Any other questions, or it's very helpful to know what's about to happen, so thank you for that.
So, can I just ask, is there going to be any sort of, beyond just the site-specific education, is there going to be any other city efforts in this way, like by our community engagement?
Yeah. Yes, we've got a fact sheet prepared, we've, we may be doing our own video in preparation, let it be on our Facebook page, and advertising in the newspaper, and all that, yeah, Lisa's, we've worked with her already, we're meeting again next week, we're going to take it very seriously, try to get as much notice out as possible, which is part of why we wanted to come here and brief you.
We'd actually discussed during the busy weeks in the spring even, maybe having some people on-site who could offer some guidance, go figure out if that makes sense, both from maybe police and engineering, some others.
Flaggers, like they're.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Oh, boy. Thank you so much, Chuck. We're going to move on to 10-2 consideration and possible decision on proposed sponsorship of certain community events by the City of Moab. Joel and Eve, would you, I guess Eve, you'll stay there, but Joel, would you like to come up? It looks like you still are dongling. There we go. And then do you need a dongle, Joel? No, okay. Do we have the thing so we can turn the screen off so we don't have to just be staring at a screen?
Sure. So distracting.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Hi. So in your package, you will find.
Those are assistant city manager.
Yes, the sponsorship information, which was passed by you guys last.
Spring.
Last spring. And we received eleven applications. We've gone through those applications. And there was approximately thirty-nine thousand dollars that had been budgeted that we were working with. The requested amount was far less than that, but as we got reviewing some of these applications for sponsorship, we thought that it would be better if the city sponsored some of these events and just became a part of them because we participate in them anyways, for the most part. And so as you can see from the sponsorship rubric that Eve created, the bottom three, the tree lighting, the homecoming parade and the electric light parade, the city suggesting that we just become partners with the applicants and in lieu of becoming a sponsorship and actually writing them a check and waiving, in lieu of their fees, returning their fees to them, we would become a sponsorship and those fees wouldn't be levied against them. So that's the proposal that we did on the bottom three. As you look at the other remaining applicants, we went through those and some of them, we were sponsoring through the community contributions in other ways. And so we tried to balance if we were already donating to these groups in other aspects. And with that said, we also then balanced out those who weren't and what they were requesting versus whether it was to crowd size, whether they were asking for monies that were associated with specific city sponsored employees and wages. So that's kind of how we went through it. These are just suggestions. Ultimately, you guys can discuss them and talk about them. Change them, adopt them if you'd like, move them up, move them down. As you can see, there's approximately eleven thousand one hundred and forty dollars that we're suggesting that we use in sponsorships. And so there is a lot of money there to move around if you chose to.
Thank you, Joel.
I do have one quick question. And you'll have to remind me if we talked about this in prior discussions. When we started this last spring or whenever we started this, we had a list of entities there that we donated to. The one that comes to mind is CNHA to keep the restrooms at the MIC open. Did that get moved elsewhere or?
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
As far as I know, these are the applications that we received and we did not receive an application for them to request funds to donate the monies. My guess with that would have more came in the community contributions area, but.
Because they're not really a special event.
No, they're not a special event, but so they're in the community contributions.
No, I don't think they submitted an application.
It was kept separate, right?
That has an MOU.
Okay.
So it's more like, I don't know if we want to consider it intergovernmental.
That's fine. That's that's what I remember now. I remember we did the MOU. I just couldn't remember what we did with.
Yeah, from my experience in my time from being here, they haven't been an applicant in either of these processes.
Okay, but they will continue to be funded.
So we're still funding that. Okay, thank you.
For the three we would direct partner with, I mean, those, the request amounts are based on what we think our true costs are, right? So I mean, just mentally, I think of it as still, you know, for the money that we budgeted, it is still using those funds, but it's a
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, it's in the, it's already in the city budget as like overtime police budget.
It is based off our actual cost. That is the cost of closing the roads, having public works employees go down, barricade off, law enforcement officers working some of those closed streets and controlling traffic. That is actual cost and yes, it already is included in the budget.
And then can you just explain to me, I might have missed it or you might have already explained it, or maybe it's as simple as it sounds, but when the amounts are recommended proportionate to crowd, how how is that?
Well, what we looked at is the number of people they were planning to serve. And so that's why the some, we're recommending funding some at a higher level because there's, they're reaching thousands of people as opposed to a couple, a few hundred or something. That we based it on on that.
Figure of merit dollars dedicated to a particular group divided by the number of people.
We kind of did that. It was pretty loose math. But it was kind of like dollars per person served. I think it was like two dollars.
If I may ask, so you two were on the committee, is that correct?
Yeah, and Lisa and Carmella.
That's the same group that did it last year, if I'm not mistaken.
We did have Joe Kingsley on the community contributions aspect as well, and we did not include him on this one, so.
Can I, so for instance, like the Red Rock Four Wheelers, what? So my impression was we would do community contributions to almost nonprofits or events that serve the community. Curious, but.
So the logic in that one was the proposal of the application, the monies that they were raising were going to be used towards scholarships, towards local youth. And we want to support that idea, but at the same time, we felt if the city was gonna give sixty-five hundred dollars, we would just, we'd prefer to see the city start a scholarship program and start donating that money to go towards scholarships from the city. So we weren't quite sold on the idea of us filtering our money through a third party to become scholarships from that group to give to other people.
I'm just gonna make a point from our discussion the last time with our fee, our fee, fees. Again, I would like to have fees at a rate that are affordable so that events can actually pay for them and not hitting the city up to have it paid for for them.
Yeah, and so that's a great point, council member. We spent quite a bit of time on this one actually trying to determine the fees. And what we find is that the fees are pretty appropriate. They are high because our fees are high. For a law enforcement officer to go out and cover these shifts, it's time and a half plus cost of vehicle. And it works out to be about sixty-five dollars an hour per officer. And so then it's about a four hour minimum per event per officer. So it quickly runs up depending on the number of officers that are needed to stage these events. We talked about trying to reduce that number. We met with the chief, we worked through those numbers. And to reduce that number below that, there would actually be officers who, if they worked these events, would make less money time and a half working that event than if they just worked time and a half for the city. So they would actually be doing them at a reduced cost. The city by federal labor law would still be required to pay that officer time and a half. And so we would actually be losing money if we reduced it. So we've kind of thought the same process when we started and when as we worked through the numbers, kind of realized that these numbers are pretty accurate to what they need to be for this.
I just know that our application fees have risen and, you know, I mean, and again, having an established event and, you know, being able to come back with a I mean, BLM, Forest Service, they all have like three year, unless the event changes, then the the application changes. I mean, I just would, you would hope that we're more efficient and it doesn't take as much staff time. And I know the, I know the police fees, so.
Yeah, and I would agree. We spent a lot of time as well going through our records of trying to find MOUs with these groups and trying to determine whether or not they could be waived fees in other ways through other agreements that had already been reached. We did find some for some of the high school type events, but we still couldn't find clear language that we felt comfortable that would get them through the door without us having to partner with them. And so that's why we, with the bottom three, decided that a partnership with them is probably the best route to go to make sure that we're compliant within our own set of rules.
David, you were gonna share something?
Yeah, I mean, the the larger question, which I think you were alluding to at least initially, was, is should the city, to what degree should the city be subsidizing events, right? And what the whole objective, at least initially with the doing this process, was to make it as transparent as possible about who, who, which events are getting subsidized and which aren't. And to give you all the choice of make, give you the opportunity to make that choice. So that's why fees are set at like the actual cost. And then you have the chance to come back and offset those with this program.
And you're talking about permit process too, which is, is, I mean, so separate from the fee, there's also permit process.
Well, I mean, I'm just, the 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 fees have gone up so much for special events. And I'm just like, at one point, are we, I mean, just because if you donate, you know, to a scholarship or, I mean, is it a thousand dollars that they give? Or, I mean, you you don't want to have to be subsidizing all of these events. You would like for the events to be able to pay for themselves. And I'm sure they would like to pay for themselves too. So I'm just, would like to make sure we're aware of.
That's a great, great policy question for you guys to bat around. I think there are several organizations on that list that can pay for their own fees.
That cannot?
That could pay for their own fees, absolutely.
So these organizations, do they know about your recommendations already?
No, these were brought to you as their staff recommendations and they're in no way, they're in no way concrete. I mean, you guys could go to zero, you could fully fund all of them. I mean, for us to put our recommendation to them would not be appropriate.
Well, that's fine. So so you would have little idea then, I think maybe what.
I mean, they've been, they've been published in the packet since Friday, so they're open to the public. But we didn't like email them out to these groups and say, this is what we're recommending now. What's your job to come lobby council? You want different.
Well, Karen's driving it. Occasionally, we hear from organizations, oh, your fees have gone up so much and if you don't subsidize this enough, we'll have to fold, fold up and go away. So do you have any expectation that people may do that?
I don't think so based off how we are projecting. You support these groups, the groups that we felt that was an issue. We have tried to cover costs, groups that we felt like could cover some of their costs. And again, I don't want to sound like, these are not fees for the sake of fees. These are legitimately our cost. And I think David hit it on the head when he said we're subsidizing these groups when we don't make them pay them. So they're holding an event that costs this amount of money for the city to be helping support it.
I feel like I need to just say something though about these particular events. So the, in particular, the car show, Red Rock Four Wheelers. They're, the reason why historically the city has been, you know, excited to waive fees and support these events is because they bring so much money to our community. And they really have been, they they really were, you know, the the start of the tourism. And they've been longstanding and they've been, that they're kind of our, our culture as well. So while we, you know, talk about whether or not we're subsidizing, it's important to realize that the subsidy, you can say it that way, or you can say like the city has been supportive of these anchor events that have brought the, you know, the tourists to Moab that have developed the tourism based economy that we are, that we all.
I don't, I don't, yeah, and I don't think there's anyone in our group that would disagree with the fact that the city's benefiting from these events taking place in the city. And there's good reasons for you guys to be partners with them.
And and then, so the proportionality too is that there's, there's also that economic impact that it has on our community and the dollars that it brings. I mean, I know that when we were sitting, talking last year about whether or not to waive the fees for the car show, a lot of the data that they brought forward was the, you know, economic, positive economic impact that that car show has on the community and has had for years. It's just worth, as we're talking about this, to to point that out, I think.
For sure.
Well, it's community cohesiveness and fabric, if you will. I mean, that we all stand for. I mean, I was just reading a story today about, you know, how some people lament the demise of culture and traditional organizations that help knit a community together. So some of these events, I mean, because they're traditional and they're widely, you know, they're, they're something that people look forward to. There are things that help identify more of who they are. So that's, that is a consideration as well.
Part of the application process, Mike, was to look at the overall project budget for the event from the organization as well as their overall budget for the organization. So we did see what all their income streams are and their expenditures. So and so we sort of finesse these numbers based on what we felt were reasonable for for the city as a sponsor of an event.
Well, I'm grateful you guys doing this. I mean, so this, this is a great thing about the way we're doing this, this way. We have the right number of people making very considered decisions here. And I think that's great.
Mayor.
Thank you.
I move to approve the special event sponsorship committee's recommendation for twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Tony. Further discussion?
I would just like to thank the staff for their work on this. I think this is, I really prefer this process to considering individual fee waiver requests on one off basis and and just appreciate your looking at them in a holistic manner and with a bunch more data than we can typically muster in the course of a council meeting and with the materials that have tended to be submitted. So thank you.
Thank you, Eve and Lisa and Carmella have done a great job at it as well. They've spent a ton of time pulling information for our meetings, so when we get all it together, it's productive.
Thank you.
I'm ready to vote, but can I ask you one side question? I just noticed that the arts festival includes animal control. And I guess that's been confusing to me in the past, like if event organizers were asked to just, you know, now put up a sign or monitor for animals. Or are we now asking them to have officers or is this just a personal choice?
No, this is, this is a personal request. Apparently in years past, they've had dogs that have damaged art at the art show. So they've, they have requested that animal control be there in order to mitigate that that risk.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Joel. Thank you, Eve. We are on to section eleven, new business, eleven one, proposed ordinance two thousand nineteen oh seven and ordinance amending the city of Moab municipal code C one, commercial residential zone, section seventeen dot twenty dot twenty, use regulations with the addition of eating establishments excluding, excluding drive in and drive through services and Moab municipal code, section seventeen dot twenty dot forty E to read, no building or structure shall exceed twenty-four feet in height except that in mixed use developments consisting of both commercial and residential uses, no building or structure shall exceed thirty feet in height. Building height shall be measured as the vertical distance from the average finished grade of the building line to the midpoint of the highest peak of the roof. This is a briefing and possible action.
May I recuse myself, please?
Yes, you may.
Yes, thank you.
Karen is recusing herself from the deliberation and possible vote, possible action. We'll get you when we're done. That was a long paragraph, that's a well noticed agenda item. Thank you for the good notice. So we don't have any staff member to present on this particular item.
Well, I could just, just very briefly, if I may.
Well, go ahead.
I mean, this is in line with our.
We're summerless.
Yes, we, exactly.
We don't have summer.
In in lieu of summer, which I would never, you know, that's.
I guess that would be winter.
That would be any other, any other season. She, she, we, she certainly briefed me on this. I'm familiar with the with the item. This, this follows in terms of our pattern of how we've been briefing these kinds of applications over the last few council meetings. Basically, the the materials speak for themselves, but process wise, the planning commission reviewed it, passed on a favorable recommendation. And it's to you for these two text amendment modifications to this C one zone.
Thank you, David.
So a question, in R two, the height limit is thirty feet. But in C one, the height limit unless, unless it's mixed use would be twenty-four feet. And I'm just wondering about the rationale behind making the commercial height limit less than an adjacent residential height limit.
I believe that was the text amendment as proposed by the applicant.
It's actually lower now. I mean, the, in the C one, I think it's eighteen. So it would be increasing it. Right, I understand that.
Are you suggesting that potentially we increase the height to thirty?
It seems like if we were just approaching it with a blank slate, I might make a commercial zone equivalent, at least give them as much height as an. zone equivalent, at least give them as much height as an adjacent residential zone.
I mean, this is the time if we wanted to do that.
I had kind of a legal question connected to that. Is it difficult to interpret or define, um, um, let's see, uh, mixed-use developments consisting both of commercial and residential uses? Like, we used to have a single lot that was just C1, and it happened to be a spot zone, and now we have, I think, when I looked, it's, it's eight lots, right, maybe, that are C1 next to each other?
Right.
So, um, especially if some of them haven't been developed yet, is it, how, how do we decide if it's mixed?
It's based on the use that's proposed. I mean, if somebody proposes a combination of, of, um, commercial and residential, um, in connection with a development application.
Because it may end up being solely commercial, right?
That's right.
Correct. Just a real quick clarification, too. Um, it, I, I believe the initial request from the applicant was for, um, that 30-foot height limit, but the Planning Commission considered that and was not as comfortable with it. Um, however, I'm sure the applicants would be, since that was their request.
Do you think some of the?
Thank you for that history.
Yeah, do you think some of the thinking was, we don't have very much C1 now, but we might have more eventually, and it, it has always been described as a buffer zone, you know, right up next to the residential, potentially. So, were they trying to create some kind of buffer there with the residential? Do you know?
With the original thinking?
Just in terms of the Planning Commission, yeah, I'm making that suggestion.
Um, that would be my, I don't know for sure, but that would be my presumption, is they were being more conservative about, thinking about a buffer approach.
I personally like the 24 feet. We've been talking about amending all residential zones to 24 feet anyway, at least in R2.
So, you're good with it as is?
Yeah.
Would we, is there any, I guess I'm feeling some hesitancy about voting for anything that has to do with a, a zone change or an amendment or anything, until we have recommendations from Landmark. Um, but if they come back and say, we should turn that all into resort commercial, or, I, I don't know. Um, are we, are we jumping the gun?
That's a, I, that's a fair, I think it's a fair, a very good question to ask. I, my judgment on that would be that with regard to a general rezone, especially for an upzone, that is a, would be a much more, that'd be much more of a consideration. Um, for a text amendment like this, where you're talking about uses, a change, an addition of a kind of use, it's a fairly, I wouldn't say it's, you know, it's not simply a low-grade impact, but it's not, you know, we're not talking about allowing for big hotels in this zone, right, which is really the focus of the, um, of the, some of that initial work that Landmark will do. I, in my judgment, in this case, you know, an addition like this, as a text amendment, is more worthy of going ahead and making that call versus, say, if they were looking for a full-on rezone.
I agree. So, we're really just adding a use to that zone?
Yes.
And changing the height.
Just a little bit, yeah.
Building a little bit, okay.
I was initially reading it the way you were, Tony, but then when I read, um, all the applicant's, um, explanations and all of the ties to the general plan, um, I can understand the desire to have a restaurant, because if you're going to have a use next to a neighborhood and you want residents to be able to use more, but because of all of the things that were enumerated from our general code, um, it made sense to me, and because our temporary land use, um, restrictions have to do with, um, uh, overnight lodging.
Right.
I kind of felt like it was, it was different. If anything, I would just think that Landmark would find we want to change more in that direction, so I felt more okay about it, but I mean.
Okay.
Chris can weigh in if he has a different opinion, you know. Um, I did get a question from someone saying, well, um, obviously, this is before us now, and I don't want to complicate this request with other things, but I was wondering, we know how much C1 now. There were some discussions, you know, um, in the past with Jeff and Summer, like, maybe we have too many zones, um, but if we think that we might at some point add more C1 somewhere, um, I guess then we would just be adding it, knowing that a restaurant was a use, and then, and then when that application became before us, we'd have to decide, is this appropriate in the next spot?
That's right. For what it's worthy, also something, in my mind, at least, it's a, I don't know if it's a mitigating, but the fact that it's, it's restaurants without, or eating establishments without drive-throughs is a pretty significant limitation, and, you know, what kinds of establishments we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was trying to remember, does anyone remember with the C1, I know, like, for our drive-through banks and stuff, obviously, it's limited to business hours, but if we are talking about a restaurant, we probably are talking about anything from breakfast through dinner, right?
Right.
Would you entertain a motion?
I would enter, I would entertain a motion, but, um, do, do, Carolyn, would you like to speak first?
Sure. So, there's a, in addition to this, there's a height definition. Currently, our Moab City Code has three height definitions, including two in the, um, definition section of Chapter 17 alone. Um, I feel like adding another, a repeat of a height definition for a specific, um, zone is just creating confusion. It seems like we should just have one definition, or at most two, one for residential and one for commercial, as some cities do, but not continuing to allow them to propagate under the guise of short-term clarity. I feel like it's much better code organization to narrow it down.
Agreed. Do you, do you agree with this?
Do you think that they listed it because they knew we had three, and they just wondered if they care about which one? Um, I mean, obviously, we've all expressed the desire to get it down to one, so.
Do you agree with this one?
Um, no, I don't think that's the, the optimal definition.
Okay.
Because I feel like highest peak of the roof is not act, I feel like, I, I think that's drawing on the building code definition, which is the midpoint of the highest roof surface or roof plane, and it's not actually the highest peak. So, I feel like this is actually a, a less-than-ideal definition itself. But I feel like the, the choosing of the right definition is another process, which is on the, last I looked, which is a while ago, is on the code revision Google sheet, which we, we have a shortage of planning capacity to help the Planning Commission work through that, but, yeah, so, I'm, I'm a little frustrated, and it's like.
I am personally very much looking forward to having Ms. Shepherd join the staff, and hopefully get her arms around all of this and solve all these kind of problems that we've been complaining about a year now and more. But I, I, myself, I'm reluctant to, uh, I've heard people complain, the years that we've been here, that there's not enough restaurants. C1 is, is a great little zone, and, and if this encourages restaurants to be there, then I'm, I'm for it. And I would hate to delay this for relatively, I, I agree with you, Carolyn, I mean, um, but nonetheless, I'm.
Do you think the motion would be better if it just referenced height? I mean, knowing that we have to deal with the height definition?
Um.
Yeah, we could exclude height from the motion.
You could, you could. Yeah, you could strike, strike the last sentence, and it leaves it, it leaves it a little ambiguous, but I feel.
I would entertain a motion.
I move to adopt, uh, the Ordinance 2019-07, Amending the Use Regulations and Special Provisions of the C1 Commercial Residential Zone, striking the last sentence from the, um, title, uh, from the title.
40E.
Pardon?
From subsection 040E.
Yes.
Okay.
Is that clear, Eve? Is that a clear motion?
Well, there's more than one sentence.
So, where it's. Wait, well, I'm striking the, I'll just read the sentence. Striking the language, building height should be measured as the vertical distance from the average finished grade of the building line to the midpoint of the highest peak of the roof.
Wherever found.
Okay, but leaving in the 30 feet in height. Okay, perfect. Thank you, Carolyn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mike. Any further discussion?
I just had a clarifying question. I think, I think we're okay now. I had an exchange with Summer, because I think in our packet, um, somehow this language, um, uh, didn't make it into the, um, the red line or whatever, the clean version. Um, so just, yeah, just so we're all clear that, when we go print this sucker out, um, yeah, that we have this.
Right, oh, right, mhm. Thank you. Anything else? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four zero. Uh, do you mind getting Karen? And we are moving on to our final item on the agenda. It's 8:40, just FYI, um, and that is 11-2, Proposed Resolution 17 dash 2019, A Resolution Approving the Final Platte for the MAPS Subdivision and Approving a Subdivision Improvements Agreement for Public Improvements, As Favorably Referred to City Council By the Planning Commission Briefing and Possible Action. Hi, Chuck.
Hello. Um, I thought I'd just give you a brief introduction to this.
Very brief, please.
Very brief. So, this is.
Because I think we all read the packet and.
This is the location. This is Park Drive.
We don't see this.
Turn our. You know what? We can turn around.
Oh, I got it, I got it.
Got it? Thank you.
Sorry.
This is the location of the MAPS subdivision. This is Park Drive. This is 500 West. Um, the plat itself is this, this is about 1.6 acres, would be for the 36, uh, unit apartments at the senior center. Um, the dedication, it would be for about 247 feet, long by about 50 feet wide, which would allow it to be consistent with city, uh, standards for public roads, and it would connect in here. Uh, the one thing I talked to Summer today, and she wanted me to just quickly clarify with council, she had included, um, this exhibit. This is an exhibit that was developed back when we were having discussions down. This is Walnut Lane. Here's the hospital, campus care, for the EMS facility that would be coming in, um, at that time. I don't, I don't know if it's still coming in or not, but this was the road design that was made, uh, with curb and gutter being the blue lines, red being the right-of-way that would allow the fence to be taken now, which is here at Walnut Lane, which is a good idea, and it would allow, uh, traffic to circulate through there. So, um, I think that may have caused a little bit of confusion why those red lines were there. We just wanted to clarify that. Summer asked that I clarify that. So, that's just my introduction. If there's anything, uh, there's also the subdivision improvement agreement. We've reviewed their costs. We feel it's a good agreement. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, Mr. Riley's here for.
So, there will or could be another?
So, I just want to be really clear, um, sorry, before we move forward, that we have, um, set before us, um, two things. One, um, it's a subdivision approval. Two, that it has gone through Planning Commission, and when it was in Planning Commission, going to Planning Commission, did they hold a public hearing?
It was March 8th of 2018. You would like to find the, the planning commission minutes. I don't know if it was purely a public hearing per se.
It's required by our ordinance.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure we had.
There was. I'm pretty sure. There was a public hearing, and, and on, and when was that? I mean, regardless of whether or not it was, you know, attended or not, I just.
I don't have the exact date. I have to be able to search it from these, from desktop.
Um, and then typically with, um, when the Planning Commission does a public hearing, um, what are the notice requirements?
Oh, um, well, I guess.
Well, for the record, this was a minor subdivision, so it did not require a public hearing.
Okay, all right.
And it's minor because it's one parcel?
One parcel going into two.
Yeah.
Into two.
Thirty-six units is a pretty major minor.
It's a subdivision, though, not, we're not talking about the site plan. I mean, that's what's in the code, y'all.
Yeah, and we're just having a, a fact-based conversation about the public hearing, so that we can at least all just be on the same page about, um, the, um, the residents' ability to speak prior to the approval of this subdivision. Um, and so, there was, uh, that, that's why I'm just asking, there was not.
I understand when I asked Summer, there wasn't.
There was not a public hearing.
Correct. There was, there was not a public.
For this subdivision.
There was a Planning Commission meeting where they discussed it and made their recommendation.
But it, there was not a public hearing for this subdivision?
Correct.
And nor, nor was it required?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. And so, this is what is currently being proposed, because it's dividing the big parcel into two parcels.
Correct.
And the knowledge that we have is that the parcel number one will in fact have 36 units. Okay. Thank, just the facts. Thank you for the, for that. Um, no, I, I don't, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mike, so go ahead.
Sorry, my apologies. Still clarify for me, the neighbors would love, apparently would love to have an exit to the south. So, that's the little red lines that Summer gave that you just showed us?
My understanding of what I'm reading the petition that was sent in is this is, no, partially, that's the answer. It, here's the MAPS subdivision. Here's Park Drive. I think, um, they would like to see the access come down here, down Campus Care Drive to Williams Way. That was my understanding of reading their, uh, letter today.
But no such access is designed at the present time.
That's correct. This is a road right-of-way right here. I think it's called Orchard Lane, potentially, uh, but as part of this plat, no. Part of this plat is just as shown.
Can we invite Ben Riley from the Housing Authority and maybe Kirsten Peterson from the Health Special Service District? I mean, just because I know they can answer some of these.
Right. I have a question for Chuck first. Is, are Care Campus Drive and Orchard Park Lane public streets that are, are they city streets?
Um, Care Campus Drive is a city street. Um, Orchard Lane is not developed, so it's not a city street. I believe it's dedicated right-of-way, as shown right here.
Okay, but, but extending south from there to the existing, that existing place?
Yeah, this is all Camp, Care Campus Drive.
Okay, it's, okay, on another sheet, it's labeled as Orchard Park Lane, so.
Orchard Park Lane.
Oh, down here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know why that is. It's all Care Campus Drive.
And what was approved, if you scroll back up or go to the approved, maybe just scroll back up, just scroll back, no, just, um, yeah, just up a little further. Um, what was approved was the road that would be along the south side of the proposed parcel, and the costs associated with that. So, to not only do that road, but to carry it over and down, would be an additional curb, sidewalk, gutter, road, and drainage for, and through a parcel that they, if you go back to the other parcel, the subdivision request, that they don't.
The hospital and the special service district haven't finalized plans for that other parcel, so to build a, a, a road before.
A road that goes down would be complicated.
Yeah.
You could get a lot of questions if Ben and Kirsten from the, the, yeah, Healthcare Special Service District come up, just because they can explain a lot of the history here.
So, in general, my understanding is that when projects come to the city, that planning and engineering encourage road connectivity, because that's beneficial, generally perceived as beneficial for traffic flow, to have connectivity rather than lots of isolated maze-like situations like Moab specializes in.
Yes, that's true. We support connectivity.
So, that, so you might continue to support, encourage that as the rest of this parcel is developed?
Oh, yeah. My expectation is that as this, rest of this parcel's developed, that a road would be put in down through here, and that Walnut Lane would be opened up to provide connectivity through here, through here, up to MAPS. I mean, I, we looked at this as an incremental development.
Mhm.
You know, the senior housing here, responsible for the road in front of their property, and in the future, whether it gets connected over here to Park Drive, which would be connectivity, whether it gets connected down here to Orchard Park Lane, to the Campus Care, and through Walnut Lane, I think those are all positive transportation connectivity.
So, the steps that are on there now, Chuck, no, nothing precludes connections to the south or to the east.
Correct.
Is that right?
Nothing precludes that.
Yeah, and I know the neighbors on the east side don't particularly want connectivity either, but, okay. Perhaps we could hear from Ben, his take on it? I don't know.
If you would all like to invite Ben and Kirsten up for questions and comments, yeah.
Let's grill them.
Um, Chuck, do you want to go ahead and close your laptop, or maybe move it out of their way?
I was going to see if they wanted to point it, and they could use it.
That's great. Thanks.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
Welcome. And questions?
So, I posed a question to both of you this afternoon about the possibility of having, at least sharing construction access with some other access points, um, because construction acci, even though it wouldn't be permanent, they can just drive over the dirt, and there would be some work necessary, but, um, how major that is, it's, I think, um, if the, um, well, I am just curious about your thoughts on possibly sharing the construction traffic burden with West Park Drive, or Walnut, or one of those other. Well, I am just curious about your thoughts on possibly sharing the construction traffic burden with West Park Drive or Walnut or one of those other routes?
Well, you want to go?
No, go for it.
So just to reiterate what I think...
I'm sorry, can you put, so yes, no worries.
Just to make sure we're talking about the same thing. You were asking that maybe some of the burden of the construction traffic be taken off of Park Drive and shared elsewhere.
Ah, I don't know what that was.
That was a heavy sigh. And my understanding was that Kalen was talking about, you know, coming down somewhere onto Campus Care Drive. I don't know if you saw my response to that, but it would definitely involve, I think, fairly significant cost to try to put in, you know, even a temporary roadway to access that site. As you can see, there's tremendous amount of trees, there would be a lot of road grading work needed. And Campus Care Drive, while it is a city street, it was not originally planned to be a city street and it's much narrower than most streets in Moab. So I personally don't think it's the best option to be bringing potentially heavy construction traffic on that street, which is the, you know, the main access point for the ambulance and a lot of the hospital inner workings. So I do know, you know, this project is, you know, been very tight on its budget for a number of different reasons. And any extra cost at this point could really delay or potentially jeopardize, you know, the ability to actually make it happen. So, I mean, if that was required, I'm sure we could look into it and try to, you know, estimate what those costs would be. But I guess I, we have a, you know, a city street that's really not that long to access this and to put in a much longer access point for the construction traffic doesn't make sense to me. So, you know, it's up to you guys if you really want us to explore that, but...
And just to get really specific about your timeline. So I know that projects are held, that timeline's so super important. Where are you in terms of timeline?
We are anticipating breaking ground in summer of this year.
The reason I ask is that if we, as a council, were to hold a public hearing, that, you know, that would, that would, you know, put the approval back. And how would that affect the project timeline?
I mean, we were hoping to go for building permits in early April, so it would definitely affect the project timeline. We are closing on, it'll take us two to three months to close on financing, starting essentially tomorrow is when we're closing on financing with all of our funders. But we were hoping to do that concurrently with building plan approval.
For what it's worth, the earliest we'd probably be able to do a public hearing would be that first meeting in April.
And then also, what is the scope of resident? That, what's the, what's the resident, residential requirement? Who's going to live in this unit, in these units?
Fifty-five and older, income-based, up to 50% AMI.
And are they going to be single human occupied units or couples?
They're mostly one, single bedroom units, so 31 bedroom units and six two-bedroom units. So we anticipate mostly being single occupancy.
And those two-bedroom units, all the people living in them would be required to be 55 years of age or older?
Correct.
I just want to remind the council that we, that you did hold a public hearing when we went through the zone change for this property. And at that point, our plans were, you know, pretty well-known what we were planning to do with this property. And so there was, my recollection was there was a lot of discussion about exactly what was going to go there, what it was for, and there was quite a bit of participation by the neighborhood at that time. Granted, that was for the zone change, but it was definitely about the development and what we were planning to do.
That's before our time.
Yeah, yeah, but I do remember when it happened.
And I have tried to make it a point to keep the neighborhood. I do have an email list that I've been sending out the updates as far as the site plan. I sent the site plan out in late December. It hasn't changed since then, so I didn't receive any responses from the neighborhood from the 30-plus email list that I have there, so...
So guys, tell me about your expansion plan. So this, this is this 1.6 acre parcel we're talking about. But the other parcels to the east, those are future expansion, is that correct? So there'd be more traffic? I mean, if there were, if there were no other access other than from west side of Park Lane, if they're looking at 36 units now, then the residents here could be looking at many more if there were no other in the future, is that correct?
That has never been the plan to just develop this entire property just from that one access point. The, you know, the whole plan for all of the district-owned property has been to meet the goals of the MAPS plan, which is the Moab Area Partnership for Seniors. And that includes independent senior living, assisted living, and potentially more healthcare offices and services. So those are really the, the only types of development that would happen, you know, within, you know, all of the property that we're looking at. And, you know, access points would, would, you know, have always been considered to be both sides of Park Drive as well as some access from Campus Care. We just, since we have, we don't have a big, bigger development plan with, you know, partners to say, we need X amount of space to put this type of facility in. We've been, you know, this was actually very attractive because it really gives us a good access point to use, you know, to fully utilize one corner of the property. And yes, if this is really successful and more funding could be available, we'd love to see more housing since we know how important that is to our community. Maybe it would be up in that kind of mirrored, you know, parcel that's right next door to this. Maybe we decide it should be in a different area. You know, we haven't gotten there yet, so...
So you don't, so the short answer is you don't really know exactly what might go there?
No, but if we see, if we can just look at, in general, the full development of all this vacant land, it would have numerous access points. You know, exactly how that all comes together. But it's never been the intention to only have it accessed from this one spot.
It is probably also important to note that if you chose to not subdivide, you could do exactly what you want to do. And, I mean, I realize that like parcelling off for Housing Authority to make the project happen is a step in the process, but like...
It's an allowed use.
It's an allowed right. So like, the, based on the zone and the proposed project and the road where it is, like, it's all by right is what I'm trying to say. And so it's, it is difficult for the council to, for this council to, you know...
I don't think, you can't deed the property, one part of our property over.
I understand that subdividing required, like, is required to be able to help have...
For Hsu to have ownership of the project.
Right, right. But, but, but what you're proposing in terms of the development, the plat, is allowable as is, without subdivision.
Right, without, and without, right, and it's not...
And I guess, yeah, it's a use by right, complies with the zoning. The other thing that I would caution the council on is that we have two steps in our subdivision ordinance. We have preliminary plat procedure and then we have final plat procedure. This has already gone through preliminary plat procedure before the planning commission, which made design recommendations. And typically at final plat, the issue is really have any conditions that have been raised at the earlier stage by the planning commission, have they been satisfied? And if so, is the subdivision ready to go for recording of a plat, which is the last step preceding to development? So your review is pretty limited. I will caution that we don't typically engage in wholesale rewriting of, or redesign of a subdivision at final plat because that has not been reviewed by planning commission and that was not the subject of the original application.
This is, and as you've, you know, we've thought about it over the years, this is actually one of those processes that's really typically more of an administrative process. There's not a ton of legislative leeway here involved with the minor subdivision process.
Kirsten, can you just remind people how, how long the MAPS project has been in development? And how, it's been a long time.
Yes, it's been a long time and I'm awful with recalling numbers, so... Every time. You're being serenaded. You just told us it's nine o'clock. I think it needs to be a timer. But, yes, gosh, you know, this, we're talking 15, 20, 20 years possibly that, you know, from the first, you know, thoughts of this whole plan. And, and also that it involved, you know, the city, the county, the hospital district, which became the Healthcare Special Service District and a few others. So it's definitely been a community project, you know, from the beginning. And, you know, we're, the district's just been so excited that the Housing Authority, you know, approached us with this idea of trying to put in this, this housing development. And we've been through a lot of ups and downs, especially with the funding part and the tax credit stuff. So, you know, you know, the district is wholly supportive of, you know, of this and, you know, we've tried to be a partner in every way we can. But we're also very limited in, you know, we really don't have funds to throw at this. You know, we've essentially donated the property to enable this low-income housing project to happen.
Ben, is there a plan to rehab that, that west side of Park Drive if there's damage from the construction trucks and...
That would be considered. I mean, that would be work done with the Healthcare District and, I mean, it would be their property, so we would work with them to mitigate any issues during construction.
Okay.
When you say the west part of Park Drive, you're talking about just the section...
Just the access, just the part that you use for access.
The access, yeah.
No, not west Park Drive, but that west side.
You know, I think that that would, would have to be something working with the city. I mean, that, that road could use some, some pretty serious upgrading in a number of ways. So I don't know where it is on the plan of, you know, city streets and that kind of thing. But, you know, definitely if there's like undue damage, you know, done by this, you know, the contractors, then we all need to take a look at what the solutions are.
Yeah, okay.
So do we have any, does anyone have any great ideas or options? Since it sounds like this is probably the way it's going to be, starting with one access point and then eventually with more, but with the start of just the access from there, is there anything we can do to mitigate some of the impacts on the residents? I mean, I assume that speed limit is pretty low already, but I don't know if we can put out extra cones. I mean, anything we can do to provide extra safety, knowing there are a lot of children there? I mean, obviously, let me think. Anyone have any great?
On Locust Lane, we had speed humps installed and I would advise against them. They're not good at slowing traffic.
They're good at announcing traffic.
Yeah.
They're bad on snowplows.
But that is a good question.
But a lot of that will be up to your contractor, will it not, to...
I think it's after construction is complete too, right?
Are you talking before or?
I was thinking largely during construction, but I guess it's after too. I mean, at least it'll still, I mean, it'll still be a cul-de-sac, but, you know, it'll be farther in, so for now.
Chuck's raising his hand.
Yeah, sorry.
Chuck.
So during, sorry, during construction, they'll be, contractor will be required to get a right-of-way use permit from us and we'll require them to do a traffic control plan. Because it is a residential street, they'll be required to follow that traffic control plan. And so we, I guess I would just all figure that we've become more and more stringent on traffic control plans within the last year and working with the police department to enforce contractors' compliance with those traffic control plans. So during construction, I think we can do a lot to mitigate the safety concerns regarding those vehicles. And that's part of our process.
That is reassuring, thank you, Chuck. Further questions for Ben or Kirsten? Very grateful that you were here tonight to answer some of these questions.
I guess I have a question for Ben. So Ben, I know you spent time talking to people over time about access and I got the impression that maybe the west park access happened as a result of, or that access for now is a result of those communications with people. So is there anything we can know about the conversations you had?
I mean, this, as Kirsten said, this project was talked about during the rezone application and one of the prime, the primary concern from the residents at the time was the connectivity of Park Drive. And that was kind of the main driver for our discussions with the neighbors, with city staff in coming up with this plat as it stands now. Because, I mean, I'll be honest, the city staff at the time preferred connectivity. I mean, the city prefers connectivity and I understand that. As a developer, I prefer to build less road. And the neighbors preferred to not have connectivity because they felt that there would be more traffic coming from Swanee Park and whatnot. So that was the discussion and the compromise that we had had at that time to delay or mitigate some of the traffic issues in not connecting Park Drive.
So right now, if you're a resident on the west side of the Campus Care project, to get over to Swanee Park, you have to go up and around or down and around? Even by foot, because otherwise you're trespassing?
Right.
So, there's that. Okay, any further questions?
So I'm just curious, so the residents are, they're saying that this is the first time that they're hearing that it's just going to be going through this way? Is that the communication that you've had?
My understanding is that this is the first time that they're hearing that this is up for approval for final plat. Gotcha. And that they were not aware that there was, and neither was I frankly, that there would be no public hearing.
Don't do public hearings for minor subdivisions, that's where we're at.
A question for Chris or David. Typically a project vests at preliminary plat, right?
Well, the preliminary plat represents approval of the project's subject to conditions. If the conditions are met, yeah, it's vested. And I would caution the council that we are not free to rewrite approval conditions at final plat. It's intended to be sort of a ministerial check where we essentially check to see if all the requirements that were imposed at the preliminary stage were deemed satisfied, not to make wholesale revisions to the, to the development.
So Mayor, if I, if I may throw my two bits in. I've been an advocate of public hearings and lots of notices because people tend to learn about things late in the game. This guy is a little bit different than some of the other issues like pad and recycling on and on, where we had a whole room full of people and legislative decisions were clearly at stake. As Chris points out, we have a limited maneuvering room anyway. And without any disrespect to you folks who took the time and care to come down and let us know how you feel about it, there's fairly limited impact as opposed to the whole town being affected by what's going on. So I don't mean to, to think badly of you, but it does weaken your, the case altogether for an additional public hearing, in my opinion.
Ben, I remember a year and a half ago...
Ben, I remember a year and a half ago, there was discussion about, like, bulb-outs and traffic calming ways, I mean, after the development, is that still on the books? What, I mean, what, what do we?
I guess, I guess that had kind of put on hold and it would be more of a, with the road is connected, that would be more of a, a better mitigation effort. I mean, as of now, there's no through-street, so there's really no traffic to mitigate other than the ones that are just going into our apartment complex. But as, as the, as the street connects, I would be happy to have that conversation.
Do you, do you know how long construction will take?
Nine, ten months.
One never knows.
Okay, so we have a subdivision approval set before us. Thank you both. I would entertain a motion unless there's further discussion that you would all like to have.
I move, if I may, to adopt Resolution seventeen, twenty nineteen, approving the subdivision improvements agreement and final plat for the MAPS subdivision as referred to council by the planning commission.
I will second.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Tawny. Further discussion?
I just, I don't feel good delaying this, this project. It's very needed. I, I have faith that Hsu will mitigate as much unpleasantness for the residents as possible. The other projects that Ben has overseen have, have been, have been well-received and well-needed and he's, he's always done a good job of mitigating the unpleasantness of building. And it sounds like as we move forward, there won't just be one access road or one access point for these apartments.
Any further deliberation? Call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Approval of, again, of bills against the city of Moab. Kalen?
I move to approve the bills for the period from February twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen to March first, twenty nineteen in the amount of eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-six dollars and fifty-six cents.
Thank you, Kalen.
Second.
Thank you, Tawny. Any notes or comments?
The three-quarters of that was a check for six-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand to Aldra Construction for Mill Creek West. That was the highlight.
Thank you for the highlight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Kalen. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.